So Europeans sheets.
John, hi.
I'm John.
Good.
Oh my gosh. They got this one out and start filling. No, I think I've got it down though.
You're racing your damn ass. Put it in where? Long, sweet night. Hard and damp.
Yeah. Yeah. It was big. This is so annoying.
So they have to complain of the hours. It's first day of Ramadan, isn't it? Should we make a mention of that? No. Is that? Can I do one? Damn, didn't you tell me that? Um. No. You tell me. But that's a bit. I'm fit. We just made a bit, but we can do it in a week. Okay, okay, okay. You have to tell her. I don't want to ask her if they should be easier. Things harder, easier.
Welcome, everyone. Please stand for the pledge. You remain standing for the clear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Father, we thank you for everything and everyone that's gathered here now. We thank you. Oh, thank you that we know each day all roots us. Thank you that you know each of us by name and cause us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust in you is complete. We ask that you would come by your Holy Spirit and inspire our hearts today. Come fill our lives with your love. Fill our conversations with your grace and truth. Fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this for your glory and praise. Amen. We'd also like to remain standing for a moment of silence for our councilman, John Versowski, who recently passed away last week. I'd just like to, uh, just have a moment. Thank you.
That's it.
I'd like to cause meeting to order Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen at six forty-two P.M. Can I have roll call, please? Alderman Tylic. Here. Peckerro. Here. Barubi.
Here.
Ron.
Here.
Zazoka. Here. Also present, Mayor Tzipapis and Assistant City Attorney Nick Robinson. All right. At this point, um, I don't think we have open comments from the mayor, but we do have a proclamation that we're going to read jointly. Call Bailey and Shelby Walter up, please. All right. This proclamation, whereas however effective government may be in serving the needs of its citizens, the soul of our city and its vitality as a place to live and work depends on the relationship of families, friends, and neighbors. Strengthening those bonds is not as much in the hands of institutions or governments as it is in the hearts of the people. Individuals who volunteer to help people of all ages, races, and religions cope with illnesses, overcome hardships and barriers, adjust to social changes, and fulfill their potential. These volunteers are the unrecognized unsung heroes of our society and...
Whereas Bailey and Shelby Walter, recently named as two of our state's top honorees in two thousand eighteen, Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program exemplifies the value of the volunteer community service and role models to other youth as well as adults in our community.
A surprising number of volunteers in communities across the nation are like Bailey and Shelby, students contributing time without expectation of reward, other than the gratification that comes from helping others. Some of these young people work in established groups, others seek new and unique ways to help others on their own and...
And whereas recognizing these young volunteers and encouraging others to follow their example is the aim of this nationwide program conducted by Prudential Financial and the National Association of Secondary School Principals. Its aim is to reach into every community in all fifty states and the District of Columbia to identify and honor these unsung heroes state by state and then nationally in the hopes that the recognition will serve to stimulate others to volunteer service and...
Whereas, as mayor of North Tonawanda and on behalf of our city, I commend Bailey and Shelby Walter, our Prudential Spirit of Community Award Honorees, for their outstanding volunteer contribution to others and our community. Something special about people like this, who just make the community stand out, not just because of what they did on their own, but what they did to involve their community and involve everybody they've dealt with in a volunteer way, expecting nothing in return. And this is something that, well, you don't like to say you don't see as much of nowadays because we do have a very caring community and we do have people that help each other immensely. But these two girls stand out as role models of what can be done and how people can be helped when somebody sets their mind to it. And obviously, these girls have made it part of their lives to help the people around them, whatever their needs may be. And they are certainly to be commended for that. And that's why I like to have the whole council participate because we all feel that way about our students and about anyone in our community. And that's what keeps our community strong, the fact that people like Shelby and her sister bring the community together. So now therefore be it resolved. I, Mayor Artfagi Pappas, and the North Tonawanda Common Council express profound appreciation for the efforts of Bailey Walter and Shelby Walter. In witness hereof, I set my hand and cause to be affixed the city seal of our city on this fifteenth day of May in the year twenty eighteen. Congratulations.
The mayor would like to make one more opening comment here before we begin.
One thing I would like to bring out because I think it's very important. A moment ago, President Zazoka had a moment of silence for a former council member and president of the council for several years. But as you walked in tonight, you probably noticed the flag had half-mast again. And this is because it's National Police Week. And if you've been watching the news and you've been listening or reading the papers or whatever, this is a time put aside to honor law enforcement all over the country, as well as our own community, and to honor those who have made the extreme sacrifice in their line of duty. And sometimes we forget that our police officers, the men and women who make up law enforcement, they have families too. They want to go home at night. Uh, they want to see their families and their families want to see them. And we sometimes forget that those that are still on duty and those that still are out there twenty-four hours a day protecting our community sometimes go unnoticed. And it, uh, I think this is a proper week, the proper time, and should be that way all year long for anyone involved in emergency services. We have to be thankful and grateful that while we're in our recliner chairs or in our couches, watching TV, or eating dinner, or attending some social function, that the police are out there protecting the community. And on behalf of the common council, I want to thank our local police department and all law enforcement agencies across our country. Thank you.
Oh. We got one back there, so everyone stare at him and smile, if anything, right?
Okay. Moving forward, I'd like to, uh, if anybody who would like to speak on any of the agenda items for tonight and just the agenda items only, please step forward, state your name and address at the microphone for us, please.
Good evening. Carl Bauer, ten sixty-six East Robinson Street. And I'm also the president of Twin Cities Meals on Wheels. I might be getting a little ahead of myself because it hasn't been official yet, but I would like to very much like to thank the city, the council, the attorney's office, the school board, the school attorneys, Twin Cities Community Outreach, and most definitely the owners of Sportsplex for what I believe is going to be finally a resolution of the situation known as Ridge Road or Potole Junction. It's encouraging. I realize never, everything doesn't happen as quickly as we would like in life, but it's nice to know that there are people who care. And I also want to acknowledge Mia Summerson for her accurate and continued reporting on this, helping to keep it, uh, on a positive but public note. I thank you all and I thank those who are not here very much because, um, as president, I realize that we've had, I think I've mentioned it before, we've had volunteers quit because of the condition and it's nice to know that the situation is going to be resolved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else wishing to step forward?
Yes.
And speak on any agenda items tonight? Uh, step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Barbara Barrett and I want to vouch for what he's saying. I'm one of the volunteers and I'm so tired of zigzagging and I look like I'm drunk serving Meals on Wheels. Thank you. I can't wait either.
Barbara. Barbara. Can you just repeat your address for me?
Oh, seven eighty Castler's.
Thank you.
Just don't come after me, Dan.
You could take them, Mark.
Anybody else wishing to speak on the agenda items tonight and just the agenda items only? Please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing that there's none, we're going to move on and roll the minutes. We have approval of the minutes of the regular session, May first, two thousand eighteen. I'll second it. Move by Alderman Tylic, second by Alderman Zazoka. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I approve a publication published April twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. Legal notice, request for proposal seeking business interest in establishing a commercial operation space on Aguirre Canal docks, City Clerk Treasurer. Proof of publication published April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Legal notice, completion of the two thousand eighteen tenant assessment roll, City Assessor. Proof of publication published May second, two thousand eighteen. Legal notice, request for proposal qualified engineering firms to provide services in conducting a feasible study of the city's memorial pool, City Engineer. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion when you receive the file.
Move by Alderman Peckerro.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bron. We have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I have communications from city officials. Clerk Treasurer regarding permission to remove three fifteen Faltner Street from the appropriate interim foreclosure proceedings. Make the motion. Move by Alderman Tylic. I'll sec, oh, go ahead.
Second.
Second by Alderman Peckerro. We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this item, please? Alderments Tylic.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Barubi.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka. Aye. Motion is carried. From the Clerk Treasurer regarding Ridge Road Agreement between the City of North Tonawanda and T. School District, Sportsplex, and Twin Cities Community Outreach. I'd like to make that motion with the stipulation that this is a one-time city assistance and going forward, this will be the responsibility of Sportsplex. Do I have a second on that?
I will second that.
Move by Alderman Zazoka, second by Alderman Peckerro. We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call, please, on this? Alderments Tylic.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Barubi.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka. Aye. Motion is carried. From the Engineer regarding Main Street Green Infrastructure Proposals. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Move by Alderman Zazoka, second by Alderman Barubi. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. From the City Engineer regarding two thousand seventeen draft annual stormwater report.
I'm going to make, uh, the motion that we accept that. If you haven't read it or know what the City Engineer Dale Marshall, who happens to be in the audience tonight, has actually done over the years, has been quite phenomenal when it comes to, uh, stormwater and, uh, environmental conditions, uh, set for success for North Tonawanda. So I'm going to make the motion that we accept that.
I'll second.
Move by Alderman Peckerro, second by Alderman Alderman Bron. We have a motion and a second. Can I have roll call on this, please? Alderments Tylic.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Barubi.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka. Aye. Motion carried. From the City Account regarding payment of the abstracted claims dated May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. I'll make a motion. We pay the abstracts. Move by Alderman Zazoka.
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Peckerro. We have a motion and a second. I'll need roll call on this item as well. Alderments Tylic.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Barubi.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka. Aye. Motion carried. I have from the accountant regarding budgetary transfer to reimburse expenditures related to the award of equipment from the Department of Criminal Justice. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Move by Alderman Tylic, second by Alderman Peckerro. We have a motion and a second and since that's a budgetary transfer, can I have roll call, please? Alderments Tylic.
Aye.
Peckerro.
Aye.
Barubi.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
Zazoka. Aye. Motion carried. From the Superintendent of Public Works regarding reappointment of Sally D. Saya and Kathleen M. Gannon as Commissioners of Deeds for the City of North Tonawanda. I'll make the motion. Move by Alderman Tylic.
I'm second.
Second by Alderman Bron. We have a motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From the Fire Chief, we are in permission to have the 2018 Fireman's Day Parade.
I'm going to make the motion that we do everything we can to make this a success this year.
I'll second that.
Moved by Alderman Pecoraro, seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From the Fire Chief, I have appointment of Timothy A. Thursday to the position of Assistant Fire Chief for the North Tonawanda Fire Department.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Alderwoman Braun, seconded by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
From the Fire Chief, I have appointment of Kyle A. Steenner to the position of Captain for the North Tonawanda Fire Department. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Moved by Alderman Berube, seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Can I have... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have monthly reports, City Clerk Treasurer, Senior Citizen Center. Make the motion. Moved by Alderman Tyler.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have communications from others. Live Host Company regarding exemption petition for five years of service to Cody Ott.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka, seconded by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I have Tonawanda United Veterans Council, we are in permission to close the Renaissance Bridge Sunday, May 27th, 2018, and have a parade down Pine Avenue for the Annual Memorial Day Ceremonies.
You know, we do a lot, the Veterans Committee does a lot, and the Memorial Day ceremonies they have over at the Renaissance Bridge and the parade are those functions that really draw the community together. I'm going to make the motion that we accept that.
Moved by Alderman Pecoraro.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Berube.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
From Marla Berry, we are in permission to have a block party on Master Street Saturday, June 16th, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Braun.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I Hope Community Church, we are in permission to place a sign in front of Veterans Park from May 6th through the 20th, and from July 8th through the 22nd to advertise their services at the park.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderwoman Braun.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Berube.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have the Buffalo Coral Arts Society, we are in permission to place a sign on Pine Avenue near Memorial Pool from May 14th to June 3rd to advertise their concert at the Riviera.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Alderman Braun, seconded by Alderman Zazoka.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Erie Canal Fishing Derby, permission to hang a banner on Pine Avenue and Oliver Street from June 20th to July 16th to promote the fishing derby. I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Alderman Tylic, seconded by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
North Presbyterian Church, we are in permission to hold an outdoor service at Ralph Bauer Park, Sunday, July 1st, 2018.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved by Alderman Zazoka, seconded by Alderman Braun.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor on this item?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this point, anybody wishing to speak on any city business can step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Anybody wishing to speak on any city business for the good of the city, step forward.
Good evening. Timothy Perez, 288 Summit Boulevard. I would just like to publicly thank the Fire Chief and the County Council for the selection and approval of my appointment to the position of Assistant Fire Chief. I look forward to serving the city and the Fire Department Integrators Leadership Role. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Kyle Steenner, 482 Homestead Drive. Would also like to thank the council, Mayor Pappas, the Fire Chief for promotion to Captain, and I look forward to serving the citizens diligently as I have for the past 10 years in my new role as Captain.
Congratulations. Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business, please step forward for the good of the city, state your name and address for the record.
Name's Dave Prenel, I live at 327th Avenue. I was just wondering about the house next door to me, 347, if there's any movement on that house.
I had asked why I would go about that.
Last I heard, Dave, was wasn't the bill inspector asking if you were interested in purchasing it?
You want to buy it?
That's last I heard. So I don't know what's happened since then.
How much you got?
Maybe after it's ripped down.
Oh, well, there we go. Do you know how much it would cost to demolish the building?
About 15 grand.
We did get a bit out of demolishing it. That was a little while ago now, though. That we got the...
What was it?
I didn't... No, we didn't get a number. I just can't think of something.
It was around 15,000? And that's where you're at with it? You want...
Well, you can talk to me later on this.
Well, what are your plans for the property? What do you want?
I was planning purchasing the property after everything was done over with.
Wow.
Or we can work something out. And no, I just like to view how my parking situation is there.
Right.
That's why I...
Is that what you're intending to do, is create parking spaces for yourself?
Absolutely.
Or is it... Okay. Is it... And it's currently probably zoned in R2, so it's really just for residential properties. Anyway, it's not like a business could pop up, right? So it's not like you would create an economic development property.
No, I'm not thinking about it.
Did you happen to talk to the building department about it, or no?
Last time I talked to him, it was two, three months ago.
Okay.
And he was waiting on the way he owns it and the transfer to you guys to say.
No. And I, as you probably know, handle a lot of the property inside the city and the deeds event. With regards to that, one of the big thing I know that we have talked about is if it's going to be deeded over to us, are they going to take it down? Or are we going to have to expend money to take that down?
Right. That's right. He said he was trying to get...
Exactly. And that was the last thing that I had heard about. But I know nothing further than that. It has been brought up to me again. I mean, I can talk to the building department as well. I mean, I see them on a daily basis, but...
I'm trying to keep the grass cut in the front yard, but the backyard, I think the neighbors are using it as a junkyard.
I got you.
Because they're loading it up back there.
Do you know the assessed value of the parcel without the property? Do we... Do we... Maybe an average, no?
I wanted to say...
I would guess...
At one point, we talked about it, but I'd say ballpark was two grand.
Two grand? Okay. So it sounds like...
It's something we can definitely look back into it.
We'll look back into it.
Okay.
But we haven't moved any further since, as you said, I want to say about three, four months ago when the California couldn't figure out what they were doing with it. Yeah, and there was very slow responses on their part, so we keep chasing them down from what Luke said.
No, I just... Right. Okay. So I guess our departments will look into it, Nick will probably ask more, so thanks for bringing that up again.
Okay.
One other thing. Who's the HR person in the city?
By de facto, it's a split between the Attorney's Office and the Accounting Office. The Accounting Office kind of handles the health insurance end of it, comp, that kind of aspect. The Attorney's Office handles everything else.
I would like discrimination.
You would come to the Attorney's Office, right?
The Attorney's Office?
Yep. If there is something, we can set up a meeting and we can talk about that.
Okay. Also, civil service, who's in charge of civil service?
In a county? Malcolm Needler?
Does he work with dues and change in specs? Or do you know of any specs being changed?
Do we have to approve any specs being changed?
The only thing I know, maybe a month ago, they adjusted or changed some of the typist, court typist type of positions, and they would change it, and then they would send it to the union, and the union would determine if those affectors were accepted or not. But they usually reach out to the cities for advice.
I'm just on my Superintendent of Public Works, Assistant Superintendent of Public Works, Mechanics of Public Works, Mechanics of Public Works. Anybody know if there's any changes?
Why? Do you know something?
Yeah.
What?
They changed. Drastically.
They changed specs?
Yes, yes, you said.
Do you have examples of what you...
Yes, I have the specs with... I have the specs.
Do you have a comparison?
I have an old one and an old one.
You do?
And I also have the specs. I'm hearing that they're trying to change the specs in the Mechanics' boss.
Okay.
From there, too. And I just wonder if you guys know any of that.
I didn't know anything about that.
Okay, can they change those? Can they change those specs, but how can you know?
I don't know, Dan.
That I don't know.
We have the department heads also give their input on when they're changing the specs and work with the county, right, Eric?
Yes. Department heads and civil services involved in the approval of the disapproval.
These are all high paid jobs, right? Right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to speak on any city business? Can step forward, state your name and address for the record. Anybody else? Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to closing comments, starting with Alderman Austin Tyler.
I wasn't listening. What? Closing comments. So how do we dictate who does closing comments? Is it by last name? Or sorry, I was having a conversation with you.
I start at the end and we go towards that one.
Some, just some communities, they switch it up, so everyone...
I feel like you just have, you may have a lot to say, so we'll start with you.
Can we switch it up every time, you know, rather than sometimes?
Well, sometimes we do.
I always went last for the longest time.
Well, Donna's Donna, right?
I'm just trying to make my call here. You might want to start.
You call on you. All right. So moving forward, so open comments from Austin Tyler. I feel like we should maybe look at that and switch it up every time to keep it fresh in the council meeting. Let's see. So today is the school board election, as everyone knows. It's exciting to see so many students waiting last minute to get their hours, so that's, you know, that's all right. I'll come and sign them happily with a smile, so come on. But if you didn't vote already, in the school board election, it goes until 9:00 PM tonight. It's really important, and you're also voting on the school budget too as well, so there's people there that can help you with that. And as a general issue that it seems to be talked about in the city, there's been, since the nice weather, there's been a lot of bulk garbage on streets. We've been doing our best to handle that. As a lot of us know, except for myself, who's drawing a blank, when is the bulk garbage pickup? First, it's your first garbage day, starting on Sunday.
The week after your first Sunday, the week after the first Sunday in the month.
It's complicated. So I don't know if anyone in the audience doesn't know that, but the first garbage pickup after that first Sunday would be your bulk pickup. And if you do have an instance where you really need to throw something large out, please call our DPW and just nicely ask them. Chances are, they can come pick it up and you don't make your neighbor angry, so it's just a thought. I know it's nice weather, so everyone's trying to clear house. But other than that, pretty light today, so thank you everyone for coming, too, and congratulations, the two volunteers, they already left, so I guess that one's a wash. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Bob Aguero.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 19th of May, we're kicking off our historic tours of the Tonawandas at 4:00 on the Renaissance Bridge. And this tour really highlights what the Tonawandas were all about and still are all about. We're all about being industrious, religious, and we are willing to serve. And our tour shows that with the 26 stops that we have on it. So come to the bridge at 4:00. After our press release and the ribbon cutting, Barb Hughes has graciously agreed to provide refreshments out at the Bistro afterwards on Webster Street. So I encourage everybody to go to that. There's going to be other things coming up also. I want to thank the firefighters and their promotions, well done. It shows that we're doing the right things in North Tonawanda, so I really appreciate that. And then on a more somber note, coming up on the Memorial Day weekend, I usually read in Flanders Fields, but this year, I'm going to read a different song that talks about those who came back but not came back home, whether it was because of post-traumatic stress disorder or limbs being lost or whatever. And I want to read the song from J. P. Comier, who's a Canadian singer-songwriter. He sang a song about how difficult it is to come home, and I've lost a lot of friends along the way, and I have friends that aren't completely whole either, so I want to read this, and it's quite long, so please bear with me. His words communicate more than I can communicate. And the song goes, "He got home from the service as the spring began its turn 12 long months ago. He folded up his uniform with the medals tucked inside, and he started living for today. But the present could not find him, nor could his wife and kids. He was there, but he was gone. Soon his only comfort was a bottle and a gun, something right that went so wrong. He sits outside the courthouse with his pant legs tucked away. No one knows his name. One wrong step there in the sand put him where he is today. One more, just the same. All his memories live there in the space below his knees, back when he was old. But that IED didn't just relieve him of his legs, it blew apart his soul. And if you're wearing loafers, you ain't walked the burning sands, and you ain't never had to shoot another living man. It don't matter if we won, it don't matter if we lost, they were following their orders no matter the cost. So I remember what they are given when I see my flag unfurled free against the sky, and the way we seem to lose them when they get back to the world. And the way we seem to lose them when they get back to the world, can someone tell me why? As the silence keeps on coming, as the movie plays again, you can smell that yellow dust and death hanging on the wind. And we thought the war was over, but the headlines do reveal that another soldier died today on the hometown battlefield." And I want to just say, please reflect on those words as you, we get together for the Memorial Day weekend and enjoy our, our time off, but remember those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice and those who are still hurt today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you for your service, Bob, and for all that it has served, and thank you for those touching words. Uh, really is heartfelt and, uh, appropriate at this time. Next, let's have Alderman Mark Berube.
Yes, I'll keep it simple. I'd like to commend the fire members for their promotions. And as you can see, we have a number of events, parades and stuff coming up over the next couple of months that hopefully everybody can get out to, and it's one of the things that brings the community together. Thank you.
Alderwoman Donna Braun.
Yeah, I'm almost last. Well, I too would like to congratulate our new Assistant Fire Chief and our new Captain in our fire department. And I look forward to, um, every year to the Fireman's Parade, one of my favorites. For all the students that are out there, if you have to finish community service, there is an opportunity for you to do so tomorrow at Pinewood Park from three to seven. We're having a Pinewood Park cleanup sponsored by legislator Rich Andres and one of our board members, Zach Nemec. So come on out if you need some hours for graduation, or if you're not a senior, you can put it towards next year. So that's from three to seven tomorrow. And yes, I was going to remind everyone to go out and vote tonight also. And you can tell by our agendas, all the communications from our community that we're going to try and cram as much stuff into the good weather that we have. So there's a lot of activities going on throughout the summer, and that also goes for our DPW department that has to do all road repairs and the large trash pickup. There's a lot to be done this summer, and we all have to be patient with that. And on that note, have a good evening.
All right. Assistant City Attorney Nick Robbins. Nothing from me. Okay. City Clerk Treasurer Dan.
Uh, the only thing, the only thing I have is, is everyone out there, if you have a younger sibling or child or grandchild in grades K through six, I am currently doing a Memorial Day coloring contest. You can download the application and the picture off the city website. And then you can just submit them to my office. Either you can mail them in or drop them off. At some point later on this year, the winners will be chosen and you'll be invited back to our council meeting to receive something.
Is there an age limit, Dan?
Grades K through six. So, if you want to color one.
I might, anyways, I'll wear something colored.
Other than that, that's it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mayor Arthur Pappas.
Uh, just very quickly, I think people have heard enough from me tonight, but I just want to mention this coming weekend, there's a lot going on. Just to mention a couple of things, nine thirty in the morning, the Little League Parade starting at the Old Lowery Middle School over to the baseball field on Wheatfield Street. At one o'clock in the afternoon, there's the Band Shell, the new Band Shell ribbon cutting will take place. And there'll be some entertainment and refreshments there, so that's something to look forward to. In the, in the, uh, there's six o'clock, I believe, is that, Exchange Club, Exchange Club.
Child abuse fundraiser.
Right. And that's what the. Right, and that's what the Exchange Club is all about, and that's a basket wrap at six in the evening. And then later in the evening, uh, over at the new Whirlitzer Complex, there's a disco night taking place for Project Pride. So if you want to do one or all of those things, it's going to be a busy weekend. Other than that, congratulations to the two firemen and thank you all for coming, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Finally, just a couple of closing comments for myself. I also would like to thank the firefighters who voted. And I'm sure with Chief Sikora, he chooses very able-bodied and respectable people to get in these positions and do a great job, so I, I welcome you to your new appointments and congratulate you again. Also, as far as the school vote, I think everybody, you know, if you haven't been out tonight to vote and you're eighteen and above, go out and vote for yours, it's your school budget for your school and NT and our system and our taxes, so it's important to get out and vote. Other than that, I'm going to keep it short. Thank you all for bringing up your issues that you brought tonight and any concerns that you have, and I'd just like to get a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
By Alderman Braun, second by Alderman Pecoraro.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Meeting is adjourned.